I'll call this meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees to order. A quorum is present. I'd like to welcome everyone who is watching on WISD-TV, cable channel 17, or online at wacoisd.org/live. On March 16th, the governor granted a request to temporarily suspend certain open meetings laws in order to allow telephonic or video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Members of the public may watch this meeting live on Waco ISD-TV, Channel 17, and online. Notice that this meeting was posted for at least 72 hours. Members of the public were instructed in the notice for the meeting that if they wished to comment on an agenda item, they could write to Josh Wucher by email by 10 o'clock last night. Although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum. We are meeting using Zoom video conferencing, which allows for two-way communication. There's no limit to the number of people who can stream the meeting or watch it live. We're following all of our other board-adopted procedures to the extent practicable. All the items that we're going to discuss or vote upon tonight have been posted in accordance with state law. A video recording is being made and will be posted on the district's website at a later date. And if you have any questions, you may contact the Office of the Attorney General by calling 888-672-6787, or by emailing toma@oag.texas.gov. So the next item on our agenda is public comments. Josh, did we receive any public comments?
Madam President, no. No email or phone calls.
All right. Thank you. Next is our consent agenda, items A through F. Does any member of the board wish to pull any item that's on consent? Okay. We have items A through F. I'll entertain a motion. From somebody.
I'm going to accept the administration's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. DePuy. And was that you, Stephanie?
Yes.
Vote to pass those items on the consent agenda.
I assume your second's still good.
Yes.
Is that how it's supposed to say that?
All those in favor of the consent agenda as posted, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The consent agenda passes unanimously. Next, Dr. Kincaid, superintendent's report.
Yes, well, good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all. I just want to give you a few updates here on our continuing conversation about COVID-19 and the happenings of the district. On Monday, I facilitated our first task force committee meeting to options for how instruction might look like for the 2020-2021 school year. The 50-member task force includes teachers, as well as campus and district administrators, and community representatives, including leaders from McLennan Community College, Baylor, the Hispanic Chamber, and Prosper Waco. The force has broken into three working groups. One for each grade level span, elementary, middle, and high school, who will begin developing options to provide instructional continuity for Waco ISD students in the year ahead. Due to the unique needs of each different age group, school might look differently for an elementary student than it might look for a middle school student or a high school student. So those working groups are critical, and having the input of our teachers and people who are on the ground with the kids is really important. As a first step in prior to developing options for next year, each task force member is conducting empathy interviews with three parents and/or students. We learned about empathy interviews in our design thinking seminars. And the purpose of those interviews is to gain insight into what it felt like to be a parent or a student during our school closures, specifically as it pertained to the instruction that we provided during that time. We want to know what worked and what didn't work, as well as their hopes for how things might look in the fall. And so I'm looking forward to hearing and receiving that feedback from those interviews. I've asked groups to develop options that meet TEA's summer school guidance. According to the commissioner, that is likely the most restrictive guidance that we would have for the fall. And as you will recall, the number of students in a class for in-person summer school was initially capped at 11 students. TEA revised their guidance to base the cap on the square footage of each classroom and the ability to space students' desks six feet apart. For more classrooms, this would raise the cap to about 16 or 17 students, depending on the size of the room. The guidance that requires screening for the signs and symptoms of COVID-19 limits how large spaces, like libraries and cafeterias, can be used. And it reduces the number of students allowed on a bus at the same time. We expect to get some guidance from TEA regarding the fall, primarily how ADA might be counted. ADA, or average daily attendance, as you know, is an important factor in how our state funding is calculated. We expect the state's guidance to include some requirement to measure the level of engagement for our students for attendance purposes. And so I think it may be a little more complicated than it was this spring. We also expect that TEA will provide us with some preliminary guidance on how many students we'll be able to have in a classroom in the fall. And the answers to those questions will drive, of course, the options that we select for next school year. So the sooner we have that information, then the more quickly we can begin to formulate our plan. Task force is meeting every week through the beginning of July and longer if needed. And I was very pleased. We had a Zoom meeting with 50 people. I was very pleased with the level of engagement, the interest of the committee members, their passion, and generally their engagement. And I look forward to hearing their ideas. And so I will keep you updated as we go on that weekly. It's a fascinating time to try to figure out how to have school with all the restrictions that we have at this moment in time. And as you know, things are fluid and changing every week. And so that guidance from TEA is really important. And I think our committee can be really creative, but it is definitely a challenge. I'll confirm that the state has purchased a large quantity of personal protective equipment, PPE, for the upcoming school year. At this time, Waco ISD is slated to receive, listen to these numbers, 136,120 disposable masks, 65,596 gloves, 112 thermometers, and 1,400 gallons of hand sanitizer. Our warehouse is preparing to receive those items, and we certainly appreciate the state for providing them. And as needs are identified, the district is also securing additional equipment, such as signage and other materials, to help provide a safe return to school for both our staff and our students. And that's all I have for this evening. Any questions about the task force or the work that we're doing?
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
All right. I got a couple of questions. Dr. Kincaid, can you email me that information on the equipment and stuff that we get from the state? My next question is, I know you mentioned, say you have a 50-member task force. Is the, what the African-American Chamber of Commerce part of that? I heard you mentioned the Hispanic. But is anyone from the African-American Chamber a much part of that group also?
No, they are not. I can invite them. I will tell you that my selections were based on the participants in the Design Thinking Institute. So Alfred Solano participated in our institute, as did Herman Correa from Prosper Waco. But we can certainly add someone. Not a problem.
I will. I will get in contact with Mr. Bibles and Ms. Page.
Okay. That sounds good.
To get in contact with you. Is that okay?
Yes, sir, it is. That'll be just fine. Thank you.
Mrs. President?
Yes, of course.
Yeah. I kind of, I agree with Norman. If there's any way that we can get Mr. Bibles and Ms. Page in the design thinking. And I know Alfred has some great relationship with them. So, you know, Mr. Manning, and I think Alfred can maybe reach out to them. Maybe they, I know they probably have a lot going on right now at the chamber with all of the stuff that's kind of been rolling down because of COVID in terms of supporting minority businesses, specifically African-American businesses. My question was, you know, I think that's great that the state is providing the PPE. Do we know, are they leading, do they have recommendations as to how long to use the mask? Or how long of a duration will that PPE serve us?
Yeah, I, no, we haven't received that kind of guidance. And of course, I don't think they know how long it would serve us. I don't, I don't know how long 1,400 gallons of hand sanitizer would last us. I suspect we may get some guidance that students have to wear masks in the fall. And we're waiting to hear on that. And it's a really great question. We have so many unknowns, and I think that makes the work of this committee difficult. And so what we are really focused on is the instructional piece. And so I've asked the task force to set aside all of those, all the other considerations, such as transportation and meal service and extracurricular activities. And let's just focus on the main thing first to see if we can come up with some options. But there are so many aspects to putting together a plan for next school year. And so the concern for me is timing. Here we are. It's almost the middle of June. School starts the middle of August. And so we, you know, if you think about it, that's not a lot of time to pull all of these pieces together for the start of school. And so we need that guidance from TEA so we can really formulate that plan. So we have a task ahead of us, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes, yes, yes. Go ahead.
Dr. Kincaid, is there any consideration being given to what a lot of the universities are doing in Texas, which is, you know, having in-person school through the Thanksgiving holiday and then preparing to be, maybe doing online learning during what's traditionally cold and flu season, and then coming back at some point? Is that part of the discussion? I mean, I know TEA hasn't given enough guidance yet, but is that something that's being discussed?
Yeah, there's been a lot of talk about school calendars. And I think, you know, the discussion around school calendars is, how are you going to make up days that are lost? And I think that comes down to the ADA funding from the state. So if you can close and go to online instruction, you can count those days and not have to make them up, if that's the way TEA writes the guidance. If you can't, then we have to begin to tinker with the calendar and add days. And so I've been listening to that conversation, and I'm hesitant to start making calendar changes, not really knowing what will happen with TEA, with ADA. So that's one of those considerations that's sitting not kind of on the parking lot until we get some more information. We have been in communication with MCC and actually have an MCC representative and a Baylor representative on the task force. From MCC, we have Londa Caravoo, who went through our Design Thinking Institute. And then from Baylor, we have Quavis Peacock, who went through the institute as well. And Quavis does represent the African-American community as well. And MCC, we had a good meeting this morning with the president and some of her lead staff there. And they're really, they're really on hold waiting on us. Our planning is a little more complicated than theirs in terms of dual credit, because we have to consider kids from pre-K up. And so our plan impacts their plan, and their plan impacts our plan to some degree. So we're all in communication. And now I think the next thing that has to happen is for us to get what we need from the state. So it's been, it is a challenge. And I think, you know, we're all talking about calendars, and we're all talking about ADA funding and what instruction looks like, and no one has the answers. And to tell you the truth, at the end of the day, I think it has to be our plan. And that's why the task force is important, to provide some input to us so we can make some decisions. I think universities are moving to the break between Thanksgiving and Christmas. Primarily to, during that time period, many of the students are traveling, especially Baylor, I think. And so I think that decision is based on location and where people are coming and going to. So I don't know that that is something we want to do. When we get to calendar, we might certainly talk about that. I just haven't been ready to work on that calendar yet until we think of some other pieces first.
Thank you.
So having school is pretty complicated. And this has just turned everything we do upside down. Bus routes, how we're going to feed kids, how we're doing extracurricular activities, how the calendar might work. And so the next eight weeks will be a lot of problem solving. Any other questions? Good questions.
Mrs. President?
Yes.
I just want to commend you guys for using the task force. And really, 50 people's quite a number of people to pull in. But I think that, that really does kind of round out a perspective. It allows us to kind of really hear kind of what the community's wanting, what are... And I think, you know, it just, it really is important to get their voices kind of in there and in the process. So I really want to commend you for doing that. And I know that these are kind of unprecedented times. And, you know, the guidance hasn't been very specific, and it hasn't been as thorough as we would like. And so just, you know, I appreciate the people on the task force also, being fluid and being able to work with kind of a lot of unknowns in this process. So I just wanted to commend you and your administration. And then the people on the task force, just thank them for their time and their perspective and their input, because it really is valuable.
Thank you. You know, the more eyes, the better. The more people who can work on the problem, we might get some creative solutions we hadn't thought of. So appreciate that, Mrs. Fortaway.
Dr. Kincaid?
Yes, sir.
When you, in addition, when you email me the PPE information, is it possible for you to email me the list of people on that 50-member task force also, please?
Sure. I'd be happy to provide that to all of you. We have representatives from all of our schools. And Transformation Waco is certainly represented. Happy to send that.
I'd like to know who they are. Thank you.
Sure.
Dr. Kincaid, and what's the commissioner telling you guys is the deadline he has to give you a decision?
Well, we've heard that we'll get some information next week on ADA. And I believe we were supposed to have that this week, and that was delayed a week. So we're all waiting until Tuesday to see what we might learn. I know it was on some professional organization Zoom meetings yesterday and listening to all of the possibilities about how ADA might be counted. And it's, it could be really challenging. We hope that doesn't happen, that it, we hope that it's, you know, fairly simple for us. But there are some interesting ideas out there about how we might track how much time students are online in order to get our ADA. And so we have some concerns. Professional organizations have some concerns. And we're really just waiting for the word on that.
I'm curious, when, what is the goal to let our parents know what to expect? And I, I just can't even really imagine how you juggle. And then if you have kids, I've heard you could have different schedules for different age kids and...
Yeah, so I, you know, my timeline for us is to hopefully have some decisions made on at least the instructional continuity piece by the middle of July and so that we have time to work on the other pieces and communicate to parents what that might look like. In talking with MCC this morning, they, you know, they need that information by the middle of July as well. They need to be able to schedule students and figure out how we're going to hold classes. So we don't have a lot of time, and we don't have any guidance at this point. So that's why we chose to begin our first meeting thinking about the most restrictive guidance, which was the summer school guidance. And we can loosen up. But really, I want to, you know, want to get, kind of get everyone's brains moving and thinking about, you know, just what could be possible. What's, I asked them to look at the most out-of-the-box plan that they could and then, and bring that back to share, and then scale it back a bit to, you know, a simpler plan. But we really just want to see how creative we can be to meet the needs of our kids. And then it'll, we'll settle somewhere with something that we can implement. But we just want all of the ideas on the table.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Seix.
Yeah, Dr. Kincaid, do you have, I guess it may be premature, but do you have any concerns at this time, as far as the ADA formulas go, that the ultimate impact may not produce fair and equitable consistencies across school districts with regards to funding formulas?
Yeah, absolutely. Do you have that concern? Because as you know, we have some equity issues with internet accessibility. And that was a hot topic of conversation with our professional organization yesterday. And if you have to start counting the minutes that students are logged on and not, if every student doesn't have internet access, then, and you're basing your funding on that, then it could begin to hurt some school districts in an equitable way. So I certainly do have concerns.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Lots of questions. I'm sure we're just adding to the list that y'all are already considering, but...
It really is a stressful time. It is a challenging time. And there's some stress that comes with trying to figure that out. And that's why that task force is really important. We have some eager people on the committee, some teachers who are really excited about contributing, and looking forward to hearing what ideas they come up with.
Very good. Okay. I have seen Mr. Hobbs on my screen is here from Tasby to present...
Yes, ma'am.
...that thing study. And if you're ready to go, it's all yours.
I'm ready. I get a thumbs up just to make sure you guys can hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Awesome. Very good. So yes, I am here to present on the staffing review that Tasby conducted for Waco ISD. And so good evening, Dr. Kincaid and Board of Trustees. I appreciate you guys taking the time. As Dr. Kincaid said, I know you guys have a lot going on right now, and this is just one more thing to think about and consider. What I'm not sure about, and I'm not sure if someone can help me out here, is do I need to share my screen and show the presentation? Is that going to be done? I see Dr. Kincaid shaking her head. Okay, I'm going to see if I can do this. So bear with me here.
So as he does that, trustees, if you have a question, I may not be able to see you. Raise your hand, so you just holler. And...
Okay, I need, give me a second here. I need to switch screens here, I think. All right. So are y'all seeing the cover page now? It says Waco ISD Staffing Review. Everybody seeing that okay?
Yep, it looks good.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and move through this. The goal here is to give y'all an overview of the staffing review, our findings, and proposals for the districts. And I say proposals, these are, these are proposals based on benchmarks and based on guidelines that we have for staffing allocations. And I'll talk more about that in a minute. Starting out, let's see if it'll let me advance. There we go. So starting out, I want to talk about the staffing review process. We started back in January, believe it or not, collecting data from the district and conducting site interviews. And so we came out and visited the district in January, spoke with administrative staff, campus administrative staff, about staffing concerns in the district and where there were areas that they wanted to address or focus on. It's hard to believe that we were actually on campus doing that back in January, and now we're here where we are now. So a lot has changed since then. From there, we took that data and we conducted our analysis. The analysis can, it can, it contains both a peer comparison and a benchmark comparison. So what that means is we do a high-level comparison to some peer districts that are similar to Waco ISD. And we look at student enrollment and student demographics to determine those peer districts. And then we also compare the staffing allocations to benchmarks that we have in the different areas. And once again, I will talk more about benchmarks here in a minute. You'll hear that word a lot throughout this presentation. And last but not least, we build models for improvement. So we align the different staffing areas with the benchmarks, and we also provide guidance to address any needs that we either observed or heard about during the analysis and during the interview process. So I mentioned benchmarking. The bulk of our data is based off of benchmarks. And so it's important for you to understand what benchmarking is and why you would use benchmarks. So why benchmark? Well, I'm going to give you three good reasons. One is benchmarking provides you an opportunity to look at yourself and what you're doing. Benchmarking provides an opportunity to look at what others are doing or others are accomplishing. And then third, and probably most importantly, benchmarking helps you prioritize those efforts. So that's what benchmarking can help out with in this situation. Some benchmarks that were used in this analysis include PEEMs data from TEA. So all districts submit PEEMs data, student data, staffing data to PEEMs. And we pull that data for Waco ISD and for peer districts and make some comparisons there. We also use our Tasby Salary Survey data. And I know it's salary survey data, but part of that salary survey data is we collect full-time equivalents, or FTE. So we know how many staff members of the different positions... So we know how many staff members of the different positions are, are being allocated at, at the districts that we are comparing to. So we have staff allocation data within that, that salary survey data. From there, we also look at association guidelines. So Counselors Association provides guidelines. There's guidelines out there from Nurses Association, guidelines out there for maintenance and custodial. And so we use those association guidelines as well for our benchmarks. So I'm going to move through the summary of findings and then the, the options or proposals or, or adjustments to staffing allocations. Just to, to start off, I wanted to make sure that we do understand, and I know y'all are well aware of this, but just for anybody else that might be, be watching, Transformation Waco includes these five campuses. And these five campuses under the contract, they have authority over staffing these campuses. And so that, that has to be taken into consideration when some of these staffing options are addressing these specific campuses. That will have to defer to Transformation Waco for them to make those final decisions. So I, I'm going to start out at the top and start at District Administration. At District Administration, we looked at the, the main departments within a, a school district. In the first area that I saw, a place where adjustments could be made for improvement is in the Curriculum and Instruction Department. And so I, I made a proposal to consider restructure of the instructional support positions in the Curriculum and Instruction Department. The proposed model requires an absorption of 17 district-level positions through attrition and reallocation of the remaining positions. So whenever I talk about absorbing positions, I am talking about this through, through attrition. So as a position leaves, you would not replace that position. What, what's going on right now, big picture, is there's three different levels of instructional support in the, in the district. Two different levels at the district level, and then there's the campus-based level. So the, the proposal is to structure that into just two levels. Your district-level support would focus on content area-specific, subject area-specific, you know, your math, science, social studies. And then your campus-based support positions would be the, those positions working directly with your teachers and getting that support from your district-level positions. So it's just a restructure of that model and moving from three levels down to two to provide better support and, and better define those duties of those positions. Next is the Business and Finance Department. We, we were showing that Waco is currently staffed above the peers and what we typically see in Business and Finance. And so again, we're proposing a restructure of the Business and Finance Department. The, the new proposal requires an absorption of two professional positions and three specialists through attrition. This would align the Business and Finance Department with what we typically see of districts similar to Waco ISD in this area. Next is Human Resources. Again, Waco ISD is staffed slightly above the peer districts or districts similar to Waco in this area. So we're proposing a restructure of the Human Resources Department. The proposed model would move to a, a two-director department model. And so it would be the addition of one director and the absorption of two professional positions and one specialist through attrition. It's going to provide more support at the professional level for the department and, and better define those roles between some of those areas in the Human Resources Department. Typically districts your size, this is a very common model to have a, a chief or an executive level position and then two directors overseeing two different areas in H R. So moving now to the campus-level positions, I'm going to start at Campus Administration. Camps, looking at your Campus Administration, your camp, some of your campuses staff a Dean of Instruction. And so currently, there is a Dean of Instruction at one of the high school campuses and at all of the middle school campuses. And so the, the thing to consider there is adjusting the, the campus or the, the staffing level for the Dean of Instruction, either adding a Dean of Instruction to that other high school to balance that out or evaluating the, the benefits of this Dean of Instruction at those other campuses. And, and if, if there is no benefit to that, then maybe consider absorbing those positions through attrition. But providing that equity and, and short, shoring that up with that one high school campus that is short of this position. The other area is a Testing Coordinator. Waco High School does have a dedicated campus testing coordinator. But at University High School, that is being performed by one of the Assistant Principals as part of their duties. So just making sure that, that we're providing equity there, making adjustments in that area to make sure those two campuses are equitable. Assistant Principals. Overall, district-wide, we're showing the, the need to absorb six Assistant Principals through attrition to align with the benchmark level. The benchmark level we use is one Assistant Principal for 350 students. I'm, I'm sorry, one Assistant Principal for 450 students. I was thinking about counselors for a minute. So it's one Assistant Principal for 450 students. So absorbing six Assistant Principals overall would align the district with the benchmark position at each campus. And you can see what this results in. It's, it's absorption of two positions at University High, one position at Waco High, one position at each of the four middle school campuses, and then an addition of one position at, at Alta Vista Elementary School. And so after that balances out, it comes out to an absorption of six Assistant Principals overall. With your counselors, as I previously stated, with Assistant Principals, the benchmark for counselors is one counselor for 350 students. So we're showing the need for the addition of nine counselors overall to align each campus with that benchmark level. This results in absorption of two at University High School, the absorption of one at Waco High School, the absorption of one at each of the four middle school campuses, and then the addition of one and, guys, you're going to have to forgive me, that does not add up. Hmm, I, give me a second here. Let me see if I can figure out what's going on there. That doesn't add up. I may have to come back to you on that where I can change screens and look, look at the, the report, but I apologize for that. But it should be an addition of nine counselors overall, but I think my bullets are not adding up to that. Instructional Specialist is the next group. So we talked about restructuring the Curriculum and Instruction Department. This aligns with that, but this is your campus-level instructional specialist. So what we're seeing is the absorption of 14 and a half instructional specialists at the campus level through attrition. The reason there's a half in there is there are a few instructional specialists that are just providing halftime support, only working part-time. And so this would align the district with what we see of other districts this size and, and also it helped with that restructuring of what we were seeing at the central office level with your instructional coordinators at, in the Curriculum and Instruction Department. Your library staff, one thing we talked about with the district is consider a transition to Makerspaces. So, so Makerspaces are collaborative workspaces. It's, it's been a pretty common trend the past few years right now. And this is something a lot of districts have done with their librarians. And as their, as some of their librarians are retiring, they're adding in other positions that could, Makerspace, or you could continue to hire certified librarians, but it gives you that opportunity. So what we're providing is a transition to Makerspaces in addition of six librarians or an equivalent position to support that model in the future. For your campus clerical staff, we're showing the opportunity to absorb eight campus clerical positions through attrition across all your campuses. This also, it results in a need for reallocation of some of those staff, but there's the opportunity to absorb eight positions overall. For your non-campus support staff, so this is at, at your district level, and these are your paraprofessional or your non-exempt positions at the district-level office. We're showing the opportunity to absorb up to 20 non-campus support positions through attrition to align with the benchmark level. Determining what those positions are would be up to the district, looking at workload and looking at, at the allocation within departments. And we talked about some of that with, with your business and finance and with your Human Resources Department with some absorptions in those areas. Educational aides, this, this was a big one for the district. We were showing that the district was staffed significantly above peer districts in this area. On average, the, the peer districts were about 186 positions fewer than Waco ISD. And so when, when we applied the benchmark level, we were seeing that same result here. We were, we were seeing that there's opportunity to absorb up to 190 educational aides supporting general education through attrition to align with the benchmark level in this area. We looked at Special Education separately. For Special Education, for your teachers, we're showing the need to add 18 special education teachers in aggregate. This would be the addition of 16 teachers in the, the Resource and Inclusion Program, the addition of three teachers in Functional Academics, which is now y'all's Achieve and Aspire Program, and the absorption of one teacher in, in the early childhood, which, you know, that's that old P P C D program now. The, the early childhood special education program. For Special Education Aides, your paraprofessional support, we're showing the addition of seven special education aides needed to, to align with the benchmark levels. The addition of 15 aides in Resource and Inclusion, the absorption of six aides in Functional Academics, absorption of one in CELL, which is the Behavior Program, and the absorption of one aide in the early childhood. And again, that's the addition of seven in aggregate. Continuing with Special Education, we looked at the, the district Assessment Staff, which is your diagnosticians and L S S Ps. And we all also looked at your speech therapies. If, if we look at your Assessment Staff, we're showing the need for the addition of 11 assessment positions to align with the benchmark level for the district. The benchmark caseload is, is 80 to 85 students. And so the addition of 11 assessment positions would move the district to that benchmark caseload level. For Speech Therapy, we're showing the addition of four positions in this area. The benchmark caseload is 45 to 50 students per speech therapist. And so the addition of four positions would allow the district to move to that, that level. For your teachers, we projected enrollment to next year by graduating each grade, so moving each grade up one grade level and then basing it on historical enrollment growth. If we did that, projected enrollment, we're showing the need for the addition of 28 elementary teachers for next school year. The opportunity to absorb up to 12 middle school teachers and the opportunity to absorb up to two high school teachers to align with benchmark levels on those campuses. For your Custodial Staff, we, we look at the Association of Physical Plan Administrators Guidance for Custodial. For the Custodial Staff to align with those standards, we're showing the need to add 14 custodians across the district. And then last but not least, is, is the, the Security Staff. Looking at your Security Staff, there are no guidelines out there for security, but we did just look at, at the district in aggregate and talked to the, the Safety and Security Staff about issues and concerns and also with District Administration. And this was one thing that came up. Just having the addition of a security guard at, at Central Administration would be beneficial there. And that is the conclusion of my presentation. I know I did have one error in there with the counselors. I do know that the total was correct, but my bullets were, were inaccurate. I can go back and look at that in the report. If, if anybody wants more information on that, I'm happy to do that.
Are you saying you can find out what that number is right now or?
I, I sure can. I should be able to.
Is that in the next, is that in the staffing review? What is that?
It is. There, I, I believe you guys have the report in your, in your packet as well. And so I just, I had just messed that up on the, the presentation. So what, what it should have come out to, it's actually page 23, at the bottom of page 23 in the report. And it, and it would be the addition of one counselor at University High School would be needed. The addition of two counselors at Caesar Chavez Middle School, one counselor at Tennyson Middle School, the absorption of one counselor at Carver. And then at your elementary level is the addition of one counselor Alta Vista, Cedar Ridge, Crestview, Heinz, Kendrick, and South Waco. So it, it was the addition of, of three secondary counselors in aggregate, it looks like, and the addition of six elementary counselors in aggregate. So I apologize for that, that error on the slide there.
Good.
Would you mind speaking to how long it might take to make adjustments? You have some big adjustments that you're recommending here. How long do districts generally take to make these kinds of changes?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Kincanon, that's a good question. In, in some of these areas, they can be made rather quickly. And, and part of that depends on a couple things. One is the need for, if, if there's savings that are needed and, and some of this, the absorption of staff can obviously provide savings. For some of these positions that, that aren't contract positions or at-will positions, you can implement those immediately if you want to. Now, we all understand that, that that's a difficult thing to do sometimes. So if we're talking about through attrition, I, I think at the level of, of what the district is looking at here, you're probably talking about two or three years before you're getting close to, to meeting some of these, these benchmarks, just looking at this through attrition. You know, obviously adding staff is going to be based on your budget, but absorbing those staff through attrition, some of the larger ones, the educational aides, some of the other positions where there's a, a lot of positions that need to be absorbed in your Curriculum and Instruction Department, those are going to take some time and, and it could be two or three years before some of that plays out.
Yeah, we.
Madam President?
Oh, go ahead, Ellen.
You know, my concern, in extension of that, I think the timeline may be even longer as we ramp up recruitment for these positions. I mean, a lot of them are, well, the number of, of staff that would be involved and the availability from a recruitment standpoint. It seems like the timeline may be fairly longer than two or three years to look at new positions and fill those positions. The onboarding process, so.
Yeah, certainly couldn't add all of those positions without some attrition in some of the recommended places. So it could take some time. And I, I will tell you, you know, likely we're going to need extra staff this fall if we have to have 11 or 15 kids in a classroom. But I think, you know, it's just, it's just strategic, right? So we have to decide what recommend, what recommendations we want to take and when we want to implement them. And I think what's important to note is that we're not doing a R I F. We're not planning to have people lose their jobs, that the recommendation is through attrition and over time. So appreciate, appreciate the recommendations. I will tell you too, you know, we don't have to take all of the recommendations. There's some.
That's right.
There's some play, you can speak to that too, if you want, Mr. Hobbs. I'll let you take it for a minute.
You bet. I mean, Dr. Kincanon is exactly right. This is, this is decision, this is just information for the district to make decisions going forward. And that's all it is. Just because you are not staffed aligned with a benchmark does not mean that it's wrong. You may have a district, a distant, a different initiative than some other districts in some certain areas. And, and you may want to staff heavier or lighter in some certain areas because of that initiative. So don't think just because you're off the benchmark that it's wrong. But what this is going to do is it's going, going to force you as a district to look at these areas and evaluate them and determine if you're okay being staffed off that benchmark and then prioritizing your efforts, as Dr. Kincanon said.
Thank you.
Um, Dr. Kincanon, just, I'm sorry. Couple thoughts. I was thinking that it, since we're in the middle of transforming how we deliver education, it might, some of these decisions might be a little premature or even targets.
Since we're in the middle of transforming how we deliver education, it might, some of these decisions might be a little premature or even targets. I, I think you mentioned that. We don't really know what things are going to look like in the fall thereafter. But additionally, I, I, you know, I would just say it's uh, uh. You know, being average is not a goal of mine. Um, you know, it's uh. I can understand, and obviously we do want to study what other folks are doing, but we just need to do what makes sense for us. So, you know, don't, I, my, my concern would be in pursuit of trying to get ourselves in line. We destroy something that's actually doing some good or working and that would be a, a travesty, so. But.
Very, very good point.
Judgment on that.
Um, that's a very good point.
I don't, I don't think we're, I don't think we take every single recommendation, but I think we're all, we need to look at the big picture um about our finances and, and like you said, what's working, um, places where we might need additional support. We know we need additional support in special ed. Um, we certainly aren't going to be able to add all of those positions without making some changes elsewhere. I think counselors are a place where we can improve as Tasby pointed out, and so.
Definitely.
There's some trade-offs and it, it will take time and um we'll have to continue to work through it over the next two or three years. I'll tell you, I was really pleased with the report. I thought Tasby did a, a great job of um capturing what we look like. And I thought the recommendations were uh really solid. Um, doesn't mean we'll do them all, but I um, I was pleased with the work and I thought they did an excellent job.
Thank you, Dr. Kincaid. I appreciate that.
Mrs. President?
Yes, Ms. Cordway.
Okay. Uh, I, I agree with Carrie. I think, you know, as we go forward, I, I appreciate Mr. Hobbs.
Norman, you're muted, by the way.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, but, but Ms. Cordway has to the floor and then you're next.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, basically agree with Carrie and I think, you know, really moving forward, Dr. Kincaid and really taking a look at the needs of our district and kind of seeing how we can uh take these recommendations and kind of tailor it again to kind of the needs of the district. And I, I appreciate Mr. Hobbs' report. Uh, the question that I had was, is this information being shared with Transformation Waco? Do they have this report? Is this something that they're aware of so that they can look at these recommendations for those campuses?
That's a good question. Um, I don't think we have shared it with them yet, although I mentioned it in my principal's meeting this week. And they were all online with that, so um, so they know it exists. I haven't personally talked to Dr. Um McDermott about it.
Okay, great. Just wanting to make sure that they, since this is such a comprehensive report, that they have the information available to them also to make kind of guided uh adjustments if they need.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Manning.
Okay, uh, thank you. A lot of the um people on the board, I have never been a fan of these reports, to be honest with you. Because of the fact that these uh staffing reports reduces everybody to a number and not a person and not a exception, uh, individual situations that we have. And we are, we have always said that Waco Independent School District is exceptional. And uh when I first got on the board uh a few years ago, one of the principals always told me, they said, Mr. Manning, um, we need to put more into our kinder through sixth grade, the basic foundation of education. Because that goes, uh, well, basically the person told me, hey, if they get past the sixth grade, we really can't help them. So we have to help them at the lower levels to give them that basic educational foundation. So um, and then also, I, I think, I think we have always said that we think that we have heard that we, we have always been top-heavy at administration. But I'm, I'm saying that basically I support our elementary schools, our kindergarten. You know, uh, kindergarten's a sixth grade. We need, until we make a grade across the board for uh, I mean, for, for, what, we got twenty-two schools, uh, what, we need twenty schools to be, be making aids. And uh by, by the new T E A uh guidelines and stuff like that, uh, until, until that time, we gonna have to be very, um, I, I guess, we, 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 we can't, we cannot be judged by other school districts of our size and what they are doing. We have to look at what is Waco Independent School District is doing. And until we close that grad, uh, grad, graduation gap, uh, until we hit most of our schools, maybe not all A's, but maybe Bs and stuff like that, that um we have to do things differently here in Waco Independent School District. And I'm just saying that, that, once again, that's just my opinion. And uh, I, I, I can see what the staffing uh guidelines are and stuff like that. But, but, but we have a long, we have a long way to go. And I accept the fact, like, uh, Dr. K, I understand, like you said, that all of this cannot happen in the next year. It's going to take two or three years for this to happen. But, but like I said, until we reach a level of success, some of these staffing guidelines, I think, will not work for us.
Madam President?
Yes, Ms. Houston.
I had a question about the data. I think it's on page forty-one of the review that had the um some of the P E M's data on the econom, economically disadvantaged percentage. Is that from the P E M's data from the school year before this last one?
Yes, the, the P E M's data is all from um the eighteen, nineteen school year. That was the only data that it's available at this time.
So that was the data that we had a lot of, we had a lot of questions about whether or not it was accurate, correct? Okay, I, I, that, that just caught my eye and I just wanted to, just, just to ask. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I was thinking the economically disadvantaged numbers are more eighty-eight, eighty-nine percent?
Over ninety.
That's right. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so the, the, the bad data, just, it's just there until time passes and it's not used in the reports anymore, but think, that's a good catch and that um, that was wrong.
Anybody else have a question or? Comment? Thank you, Mr. Hobbs, for your work and thanks for joining us tonight.
You bet. I, I appreciate it. I've, I've done quite a few of these and I'm still not used to them. I, I like to be in person. Um, so, so I appreciate y'all, you guys bearing with me, but hopefully I'll get to see you in person next time.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jennifer Barton, who's also with Tasby, Compensation Consultant.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, good evening, everyone. Hopefully you can hear me. Um, yeah, so uh my internet has been a little temperamental, so hopefully we can make it through here. So let me go ahead and share my screen. Um, here we go. Okay. Is everybody good with that? All right. Okay, so uh a little bit similar to the staffing review, uh, some of these processes for compensation review um may look similar. Uh, but the goal today is to really give you an overview of our project and what we did for Waco I S D um this year. And then to give some recommendations on um possible scenarios that the district may want to adopt for um their compensation plan this year. All of this, again, just like the staffing uh review is proposal, um, we have had, you know, discussions with the district, but obviously it is the board's decision on which way they want to go, but we're happy to answer questions. Um, and to um definitely discuss any of this uh tonight. This is a workshop format, so we definitely want you to ask those questions and to work through this in case there's anything that's unclear. So um very similar to what we've seen um with the staffing review. We have a process that we go through with the pay study. Um, and so we go through data collection, just like we do with staffing. And Zach and I came to the district and we visited in January. Um, we did some interviews. We had kickoff discussions with the district. And we really looked at all of your data, did a lot of collection on the data. Um, and then we looked at our own salary survey that we put out to all districts. And we looked at that market data and we're going to get into what the market looks like and all of those things here in a minute. But we gathered that market data from our information, um, as well as a few uh third-party vendors. And then we look for common jobs that we match throughout this process. So not every job in the district will be matched, but some common ones that we typically see across school districts in Texas. And then we build our models for improvement. And so we look to um align pay structures with the market to make sure that they're strong and competitive for employee pay as well as internally adjust employee pay. So we have um equity issues hopefully resolved and we move um individual jobs as well as positions closer to market pay. So that's kind of our process here for the pay study. So when we're looking at a pay system, we really have four objectives that we're looking at. Our first one is we look at our compensation package to recruit employees. So we want to make sure that our starting rates are very competitive, especially for our hourly positions. We want to make sure that there's a competitive pay out there for um bringing in experienced new hires. You know, making sure that that starting number for our teachers is competitive against the districts that you compete with. And really looking at what we do with our compensation package to recruit employees into Waco I S D. We also look at paying for the job value. We want to make sure that, you know, employees are paid for that job value at the market value, but that we're not overpaying them greatly or underpaying them. So we're really around that target market rate for the job value. We also want to think about retention. Are we retaining our employees, um, making sure that we're advancing the pay to the market rates at an appropriate rate, uh, appropriate rate? We also want to make sure that we're giving market competitive pay increases each year. Um, and, you know, making sure that we're paying our employees very similar or better, hopefully better, than our surrounding districts. That way we're retaining the great employees that we haven't invested in. And then looking at controlling costs. Um, obviously, you know, the school board has to really think about um the budget each year and looking at what that is going to be along with the district. And so making sure that the salary plan and the increases that we do give to employees in a district are driven by the budget. And so, you know, making sure that you gives um those increases that are competitive if you have the funds to do so. And so again, we're just looking at um a pay system, having the market rate, which would be that bullseye that's kind of in the middle. And then we have a maximum rate and a minimum rate. And that essentially creates our pay range that we have our employees grouped in. And then depending on the job value or the responsibilities of that job, we have different levels and different types of jobs grouped into those pay ranges. And so as um the responsibility, the decision-making and so on and so forth gets more complex, then typically those employees are in a higher pay range. Um, we tend to have a lot more um, or I guess a number of employees in your um pay ranges that are at a lower number. And so we have these that usually go up anywhere from one to two, three, and so on and so forth. But again, within each of these pay ranges, we are looking to make sure that all of the pay within there is around that target rate or that midpoint, that market alignment. And so we want to move employees towards that midpoint within a reasonable rate and try not to have too many outside of the midpoint or above. And so really controlling those pay ranges, making sure they're competitive and kind of scooping everybody in there um and making sure that their pay is competitive and strong. Any questions on pay design before we move on? I don't hear anything. I'm just moving on. Okay. So for comparison for Waco I S D, we worked with the school district to create a market where we will pull data and we looked at these districts um as your basically market that we're going to compare. Um, you know, your jobs, your pay and so on and so forth. And you can see there's a wide range there, but we look at the geographic market when we're looking at pay to where that's a little bit different than your staffing review. The pair districts in a, in a pay review or a pay study is going to be your geographical area. Um, we have some, uh, I guess X's you see and some asterisks and so on and so forth. So you can see over on the columns for teachers and exempt and non-exempt. Um, the districts that have those double asterisks actually did not participate in Tasby's salary survey. So the only data that we have for those particular districts are just for our teacher schedules. But we can compare the teacher market to those particular districts. The X, the large X with the asterisks, we are looking at those particular districts for directors and above positions. And then the ones where you just see the basic X, we have been able to. From smallest to largest there, so hopefully that's a little um better for you there as uh your request. Um, but you can see that uh your area, you have a lot of different sizes of districts. So it's very different than what you might see in a large metropolitan area to where you have larger districts that you're competing with. So um it does vary a little bit, but this is the best group of districts for your data. Into, let's see if I can, there we go. So other market sources that we look at, uh, we look at statewide market for districts uh with student enrollment of ten thousand to twenty-four ninety-nine for directors and above. And so we decided to go ahead and widen the net basically for your market for directors and above. So we can have a larger data set and so we can compare those positions um throughout the state. Cause often they're single incumbent positions, you're looking to recruit in a wider area and making sure that your pay is competitive enough, competitive enough to not only keep those directors and above that you want to have in your district, but also to recruit um new talent in whenever that's necessary. We also have a couple of third-party vendors that we um purchase data from for our non-school market of the Waco area. And so that is the Economic Research Institute and Comp Analysts, and we do that for your metro area. And so that is all of our data that we've used for this project. So one of the first things that we look at is we, we look at our teachers and we look at the experience just to get an idea of what it looks like in Waco I S D. And so we just have to remember that this is a snapshot of data, so this is not necessarily what your data might be right now. This was taken back um earlier in the year, but at the time there was nine hundred and eighty-five teachers reported. And you can see on the pie graph how the distribution of the experience of your current teachers. And so you can see that a large percentage of your current teachers are there from about one to fifteen years. And so, you know, we do have kind of that sweet spot there for your um ten to fifteen years. You have about thirty-two percent, but we have a large percentage of your teachers in those, you know, younger years. So when you're thinking about um, you know, keeping your talent, investing in them and training, we want to make sure that pay is strong for these years to make sure that we're retaining the great people that we hire. Looking at your new teachers to the district, these are your teachers that you're newly hired. Um, at the time of our data collection, it was about a hundred and seventy-five teachers. Um, and tha- that have zero years of local experience. But when we're looking at just new to the profession, fifty-eight percent of the teachers that you're hiring into Waco are actually uh new year, new teachers. And so that's just something to consider when you're having to invest in resources and costs for training and making sure that, you know, we're providing programs for those teachers to, to get them trained well and to keep them in the district. So this is just information that's uh good to know for the school district. So looking at the market salaries, uh, we benchmark, again, that word benchmark comes up, but we survey for year zero, five, ten, fifteen, and twenty with our sal- salary survey. And you can see the salaries at those years for Waco compared to your local market median. And I think the, the big takeaway from this chart is that y'all are doing awesome for paying your teachers. It is very evident um that you are paying your teachers competitively. You're anywhere from one percent to five percent above market, uh, depending on the year. Your strongest year right now is at the year five, um, which is a good thing because we know that a lot of teachers want to leave the profession about that type of year. So really having great pay at that time um is a good thing. Um, and you have to remember too, that a lot of the salaries um this last year were based on House Bill Three money. And so being able to stay competitive with all of the m- market fluctuation that we saw with House Bill Three is a celebration. So kudos to you as a school board and you as a district for really valuing your teachers and being able to pay them and to keep their pay very competitive. And so taking that table and putting it into a visual, I always like to look at the. And so taking that table and putting it into a visual, I always like to look at the graph. You can see Waco ISD where your graph is compared to the local market median. Looks very strong, you're way above there. And so that's a really pretty graph. So congratulations on that. Always like to celebrate the great things. All right. And so the other thing that we look at when we're thinking about teachers, we look at the um teaching area stipends. And so these stipends are really for your hard-to-fill areas, um, bringing in those teachers and giving them a little bit of extra compensation for um certain areas. And so we, you know, look at uh specific stipends. So we look at the master's degree, subject areas, master's degree, which is important whenever we're offering dual credit classes. We're looking at secondary math and science, special education teachers bilingual and ESL. And so those are the ones that we actually surveyed for. And so you can see where Waco ISD and the stipends that you offer compared to the median um and the number of districts that have reported um that particular stipend. And um it's in the report, but we didn't put it on this particular uh chart. But one thing to note for the secondary math and science, the 8,000 is actually for high school. Um, and you offer 6,000 for your middle school. Um, so really, you know, for those middle school math and science teachers, that's a very, very competitive um market stipend there. It's way above market median. Um, and so that is something that we discussed with the district. Um, one recommendation that we do have in the report is uh right now your special education general resources at 1,000. And we recommended going ahead and increasing that particular stipend to the median stipend of 1,500. You know, the re- when we're looking at our special education positions and teachers, we all know that that's a very challenging position, uh, a hard job. And just across the state, we're seeing the trend where it's very difficult to recruit great special ed teachers and to keep them. And so we want to make sure that, you know, we are getting them some incentives to stay in that position and to do all the work that they have to do. But overall, the teaching area stipends in Waco ISD are strong and competitive. Um, and that is a great thing. So you have strong base salaries as well as strong stipends. So definitely strong pay across the board for teachers. So the other groups that we look at is we look at our exempt, um, which are central administration, campus administration professional. And then we will get to our hourly in just a few minutes. Um, so we look at the market salaries here for our administrative and professional positions. And we break them into these three groups. So again, you can see that our pay is strong, employee pay to market, central administration, which we compared to statewide data. So for those directors and above, that's who is in your central administration. You can see that their pay is strong at 97% to market, so just 3% below. Um, and then the pay range midpoints are also strong there. Um, at campus administration, you can see that your principals and your APs have very strong pay there. Um, and then your professionals at 98% to market and 100% uh for their pay grade midpoint. Um, and so we always consider a competitive range between 90% and 110%. So that gives you kind of a frame of reference for what we're thinking about. So when you look at these percentages, you can see that they're pretty much right around target. And so that's a great thing. So you are paying, you know, not only your teachers great, you are also paying these um exempt professionals um great also. And then moving on to our non-exempt, these would be our hourly positions. And so, you know, districts always need to look at those hourly positions, making sure that they're competitive with market as well as looking at their starting rates. So that way you can definitely recruit those individuals into your district. Because, you know, for our non-exempt positions, you're competing with a lot of just the local businesses. So your food service is competing with the restaurants and, you know, we have retail and all of that. And so I always kind of, bless you, um, I always kind of make the joke that, you know, it's really hard sometimes to compete with Buc-E's when you're looking at non-exempt because they pay so much hourly. So we have to make sure, you know, that we are having strong salaries for our hourly positions. And so, you know, overall, when you look at this group, we break them down into our clerical and technical instructional support and auxiliary. So our clerical and technical are, are more your secretaries and some of your computer positions that we're looking at hourly. Instructional support would be looking at your aides and some of other select um positions such as your LVNs. And then your auxiliary, you're looking at definitely your custodians, your maintenance, your trades and so on and so forth. And so really, um, even though it's not, they're not necessarily um not competitive, but I would say your least competitive group at this point is your clerical and technical. And so, you know, they are about 9% below market, not only for the pay, but as well as their pay grades. And then we're looking at their starting rates are pretty low. They're about 14% below market. So through the pay study and the adjustments that we put, and you can find all of this in the report, we made sure to address the clerical technical group by not only making sure that they have some strong um pay structures, that their starting rates are strong, but we also gave them some additional adjustments there to make sure that their pay is um stronger than where it is right now. Looking at your instructional support, um, you can see that your aides and those select positions are paid very well. Um, and so this is both your general education aides as well as your special education aides. And then as I said, like your LVNs and your deaf ed interpreters and some of those things. So, you know, looking for some of these positions, your instructional people that are on campus working with kids, um, you can see that they are paid very well at 8% above market. Their pay grade midpoint is 15% and then their starting rates are strong at 6% above. Um, going to your auxiliary, this is a great celebration also. They are paid very strongly. Um, overall, while there might be a few positions maybe that are a little bit lower than we'd like to see, um, overall, this group is paid very well, which is great. That means that you're able to recruit and to keep um those positions, you know, such as custodian, some of your trades um in the district. And that way you have um strong staff that are supporting your campuses and your facilities. So that's great also. So overall, when we're looking at the market, um, for all of your groups in Waco ISD, you have made great strides and efforts to give them start, uh, strong pay and to maintain it. And so we did that with you uh through the pay study this year. We also helped do some more of that. So hopefully it will keep you going strong for a while. So I just think that these are all great celebrations. So uh, our recommendations are basically to implement the pay structure adjustments that we've recommended. And this goes into deep detail in the report, but we want to align those positions and those jobs with market. And so we give you four structures. You have the teacher, administrative professional, paraprofessional, and auxiliary. We want to make sure to improve those starting salaries. So we did do that for sure for your, all of your um groups. But for your hourly, we made sure to uh make sure all of those starting salaries are strong. We aligned the midpoints with market and then we aligned jobs within those structures um to make sure that internal hierarchy is strong um and that pay is moving towards that midpoint for employees at a reasonable rate. Um, and making sure that we're scooping all of those employees into those structures. So there's very few outliers. We also recommend that there, that you adopt a general pay increase to maintain market position. And so the district requested um three models. And so we provided a 1%, a 2%, and a 3%. Um, we will get to the model summary at the end of this presentation, but the details are in your report. Um, and we did recommend that for all job groups. Uh, for the teacher structure, the GPI is calculated as a percentage of the market median salary. And then for all of our other pay groups, the GPI is calculated as a percentage of the employee's pay grade midpoint. And so that was our recommendation for the general pay increase. And of course, you know, what you plan to adopt is based on the available uh budget and revenue for the year. We also recommend that you provide some adjustments for employees to address market differences and to maintain or even address equity issues. And so one of the adjustments is to bring 1% above minimum. So once we have made adjustments to the pay ranges, if we have any employees that are still below the minimum of that pay range, we go ahead and give them an additional 1% to move them into the pay range. That way that your employees that are already in your district will not be making anything less than a new employee that would come into the district. We also gave some targeted adjustments um for select pay groups, pay groups. Um, the 1% of midpoint if they are more than 10% below. So we said that that range was 90% to 110. So if we have employees that their individual pay is below the 90%, they would receive another 1% to move them closer um to that midpoint. And then we gave some educator career pathway adjustments at 2% above the teacher rate. Uh, we want to make sure that our educator career pathway is strong. So we're thinking about our counselors, our assistant principals, maybe even our instructional coaches or specialists, those type of uh positions. And in order to give them incentive to um bring those, you know, great teachers into those leadership positions, which is what we need. We need strong leaders on our campus also. We want to make sure that they are making at least um what a teacher would be making or more. And so we go ahead and give 2% above to um make sure that they are not making anything less than what a teacher would be or what they would be making in the classroom. And then we also uh play, made a placement scale for the auxiliary group. Um, that will be uh 20 years to midpoint. That way they, the individuals in that group can um move to midpoint quicker um as well as we can alleviate any compression in um the pay structures by putting that placement scale. Uh, this is what I mentioned earlier, um, when we're talking about teacher area stipends. We do recommend that you go ahead and bump up the stipend for special education general resource from 1,000 to 1,500 to the market median um for that particular stipend. Um, we also uh recommend that anybody that, once the general pay increase is applied, that is considered above maximum or they're outside of that pay range, um, that the district implement strong pay discipline for those employees. Um, there's different ways that we can do that. We don't have a specific recommendation. That would be an internal or local decision. Um, but you know, you can choose to go ahead and give them the general pay increase. Um, you could do the strategy of giving them half of the increase, maybe a one-time payment instead of it going to base salary. So there are different ways that they can, that you can do that. But you know, we do want to make sure that employees are not so far out that, you know, they basically, um, no one can ever kind of catch them there, you know, that kind of thing. So we just want to make sure that they're within the structure as much as possible. So just having that strong pay discipline. We also recommend to, that you adopt a market-based approach to pay, uh, market-based approach to pay planning. So we're talking about using a hiring schedule for the purpose of um teachers. And so instead of doing a step increase, we are actually looking at a hiring schedule. So that way every can, uh, teacher, a continuing teacher each year will receive a general pay increase. Um, instead of, you know, just the step, which is very arbitrary, they will get a set amount and every continuing teacher will receive that amount. And then the hiring schedule would help the district with placement of new teachers coming into the district. For all of our non-teachers, we would look at the midpoint-based pay schedule to align the pay with the market value and giving those raises off of the midpoint there. And then, you know, for all of your employees, really granting pay raises based on the available revenue each year. So making sure that we're very mindful about um the budget, about controlling costs and, you know, just being the good stewards of public funds. And then each year, we recommend that the district continue to review their compensation plan, update it as needed. Um, you know, maintain the market competitive competitiveness. We give a lot of um support and documents that can help them do that. And then really making sure, you know, that they're basically collaborating not only at the district level, but with the board to approve the best compensation plan for the district. So of the three models that we recommended, this is just a model summary. The details are within your report. Um, but we did provide a 1%. So you can see where we've given the general pay increase, the adjustments that we described. That's what is under the adjustments column and then what the total estimated increase would be. Um, and so we do give those market summaries. So for a 1% model, because of those adjustments that we recommended, it would be about 1.4%. Or a 2%, about 2.4%. And then for a 3% model, about 3.3. And so it's quick and short and sweet, it's a very high-level overview, but that is basically um what we have for you this evening. But I am happy to answer any questions, to discuss anything that you'd like, to go back on slides if you have any questions. Um, I'm ready.
Okay, thank you. Um, Dr. Kincanon, did you have anything you wanted to add before?
I think um when we speak to budget in a few minutes, I think you'll, you'll see um what's the most likely cost model for this next school year based on our um budget. But I would ask um Ms. Barton to address what she's seen across the state in terms of pay raises this year.
Absolutely. So, you know, we're very fortunate that we get to work with so many different districts across um the state. And, you know, during our weekly meetings, we talk a lot about what our districts are talking about. And, you know, just I think with the uncertainty with COVID, um, that we're just seeing uh districts be a lot more conservative than not. And I know that um our commissioner has even said that we need to get real conservative real quick. Um, and so, you know, what we're seeing is where a lot of our districts wanted to start with a 2%, a 3% model, that they've come back and they've asked for a 1%, um, maybe a 2%. We do have some districts that are, are opting with other strategies and maybe um not giving a general pay increase this year. Um, but what we're hearing from a lot of our districts are really more a 1%. Um, and so it is something, um, but you know, to say that we value you as, as employees and as teachers, um, but it is not going to hopefully break the bank. Um, and that way, you know, you have some flexibility in there too. So it's, I guess, a nice balance maybe. Um, but I will say on the flip side of that, you know, we do have some districts that um are willing to give more this year. Um, so you probably have heard some of those in the news, just, you know, a lot of things are going to start coming up. But I would say as a general rule, we are hearing districts being very conservative this year.
I'm hearing that from local superintendents as well. Of course, we all hold our cards tight, I think.
Yes, I think so.
Until it's time to adopt, but you had some conversation. And I think that people are leaning towards the closer to the 1%. Pretty, and I, and you'll see the budget that that, that, that's probably what we would be able to afford this year as well. Um, and of course, the board, you know, that's the board's decision on where you want to land. So um, I would just say again, thank you to Ms. Barton. She too did an excellent job of um reviewing all of our salaries and um helping us with consistency. There were some recommendations for um, for some of the, the salary ranges and the boxes. It's helping us clean that up and we appreciate it.
You're absolutely welcome. It was a pleasure to work on this project.
Hey Jennifer?
Yes, sir.
Um, I want to understand recommendation five. Could you maybe cover that just a little bit once?
Sure. Well, this one's a little vague. That's probably why. Because the district probably needs to think about what strategy they'd like to go with. But basically what we recommend is, we recommend that essentially, anybody that would be above max, once the general pay increase is applied, would um basically not receive a general pay increase until they can move within the range or the range catches up to them or if it is, then does it. Um, you know, if you're over max, you're already making a high salary anyways. And so that's kind of along the thinking. So really not giving anything to over max. However, I will say I think we've gotten a little softer on that to where we want to give more flexibility with the district to reward employees. Because it's almost too, you, you know, it's hard to say to an employee, well, you've been working with us for 30 years and, you know, you've gotten all of these increases every year and all of a sudden your salary is so high. So now you don't get anything, you know, you're not rewarded for your work. So we recommend, you know, maybe thinking of a different strategy where you can still um reward the employee for their year of service, but maybe not still increasing the base salary or increasing their salary even more. It's about controlling costs and, you know, being again, just those good stewards of, of money, but also rewarding your employees. So the balance there. So we don't, yeah.
That's a good, that's a good recommendation. I, I understand it now.
Okay.
Jennifer, let me ask this in that regard then. If they're maxed out, I'm sorry.
I had one other question.
No, you're fine.
Go ahead. I, I, would you, I, did I miss, is there an inclusion of benefits in the analysis anywhere?
So for our pay studies, we only look at base salaries. So your, your district can talk to you about that, but we just look at salaries. Yes.
All right.
No, that's fine. In regards to that, I, I had similar questions with that recommendation five as well. But I, I, I think you kind of touched on it, but maybe didn't recommend it or, or include it, a comment. But if they're maxed out on a pay grade based on a variety of circumstances, doesn't that give rise to promotional opportunities also?
I mean, very possibly, but um for example, yes, I think it could. But then again, what if your CFO, who is probably the top of your district, you bring them in because you have an amazing one, which y'all do. You know, you want to make sure that they're getting rewarded, but it's also very difficult to say, you do all of this work for us and you do a great job, but guess- you do all of this work for us and you do a great job, but guess what? You're outside of the box and we're not going to give you a pay raise. You know, so I think it is a balance. There are some districts that choose to freeze anybody that is above the pay range and they just basically tell them they're going to have to wait until that range kind of gets to them. But, you know, again, there's a lot of different strategies that can address this and we can definitely work with the district and give some recommendations. I had a district this year that, you know, their CFO is very much like, we want to give half of that raise and, you know, up to max. Or, you know, just a lot of different ways that they can do that. You know, we always want to think about too, you know, do you want to give them a raise to be on their base salary? If you give them a one-time payment, is that creditable for TRS? So there's just lots of different ways to that. We do not recommend one strategy because we feel like that that's a local decision and something that the district really needs to think about. We just recommend that you do something.
Well, I'm thinking, and I'm not thinking of the upper end, frankly. I'm thinking of those employees that might be maxed out that based on perhaps looking at increased level of responsibilities, they may jump up in a pay grade or pay group.
Yeah, where, you know, I mean, that's always very possible too. And one thing that we did do is, you know, for some employees, because their salaries are high already. So when we adjusted the structures, we were able to scoop more in. And so we didn't have as many that were outside either. And so that's part of it too, is the district making sure that they're maintaining and they're adjusting those structures each year to go with market rates. And so that's how you also get some of those really high salaries back into the boxes.
I see, okay, thank you.
And I'm used to working in this kind of system. So when we would have people outside of the boxes, if we were giving a 3% raise, we might back off to a 1% raise of the midpoint to still give a raise, but to control, like Ms. Barton said, just to kind of manage that budget in your system. And I would say, and you can agree or disagree with Barton, but my assessment was that we had some inequities. We need to adjustment to be for people who are in the same pay grades.
Yes, so that is something that we did address. And I, you know, we spoke with the district and we put a little bit of this in the report too. But yes, there were definitely some equity issues, but that is something that we assess during our project. And so we try to fix those as much as possible. Obviously, the district will need to go in and kind of double check that because some of it may be with experience and how credit is granted and things like that. But equity was definitely addressed through here, not only for your teacher pay equity, but for your other employees also. And so we were able to make some adjustments there. But that's where the larger cost for some of your adjustments, that's where some of that is coming from too. So, you know, sometimes we have larger equity adjustment costs because we're having to fix some things. And so when you're thinking about, why is that adjustment cost just so much? It's almost as much as what we would give them in a pay raise, that's why. But that was one of the concerns that was brought forward to us from the district. And so we tried our best to address that throughout this project, yes ma'am.
And I was actually pleased with the adjustments that were recommended. They didn't come in as high as I expected. I really thought you did a nice job there.
Thank you. Yeah, we tried to be as conservative as possible, obviously, just thinking about costs. But we do want to make sure that employees are rewarded. And the nice thing about this project is, you know, by adjusting some of the positions within, you know, your pay ranges and looking at that internal hierarchy, I think for some employees, they did get some of those promotions, like Mr. Sykes was talking about. You know, we were able to bump some of them up and still not have a huge effect on the salary, but also give them some opportunity for growth. So I think that that's a great thing.
Mrs. President?
Yes.
Mrs. Barton, thank you so much for this report. It really was thorough and just excellent and really informative. And so thank you so much. I can tell it took a lot of time and effort to collect all this data and put it together in a succinct format. So I really appreciate that. Dr. Kincanon, I had two questions. The first question is kind of, kind of seems a little bit redundant, but can you remind me again why we kind of did this? Or kind of the, I guess, the why, why you wanted to kind of take a look at this?
Yeah, great question. You know, House Bill 3 last year, there were a lot of changes with salaries. And when I got here in September, I had a number of complaints right away about inequities in salaries, particularly with positions that were outside of the classroom for former teachers who had moved into dyslexia positions. And just to be real honest, we had a number of dyslexia teachers who were unhappy because they were making less than a classroom teacher. And so there were just a number of inequities in the system. And so we just wanted to take a look at everyone. And I'll tell you, it's not a one-time thing. You want to do that every year. And when you start to feel that you have a group of employees that may be getting behind, you want to analyze them against market averages too. And so, you know, previous, in my previous position, we might, you know, say, oh gosh, we feel like our groundskeepers are getting low. Let's benchmark those and collect some data and see where we are. But for us, for this year, it was really to see what we had and to clean it up and to become more equitable.
Wonderful. My second question is, I remember our last board meeting, we talked about the incentive and the teacher, for lack of better terms, I don't know, it's called the review and the ability for teachers to kind of make a six figures if they are kind of putting in the effort. How does that play into this pay scale?
So it really wouldn't impact this pay scale, is my understanding, this is their base pay. Salary by the district that's approved by the board, the TIA comes after earning the money based on the specific criteria in the grant application. And so my experience is that teachers get an additional check as a buyout to meeting that criteria. So it's above and beyond this system.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. One of the things, let me just add, one of the things I'd like to do is to get benefit information to you at the next meeting. And I have a goal that we approve salaries earlier so that when we're hiring people, they know how much they're going to make when they come into the district. So I'll be, I hope to bring that to you soon. I'm hoping we can approve a salary compensation plan prior to approving the budget with you all having a picture of the budget. And then those are rolled, those increases are rolled into the budget and adopted there.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? No? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Barton. I think she might already be gone.
Oh, no, I'm good. Oh, thank you so much.
I don't have a square for you.
Oh, it's okay. I'm just waiting. I'm like, any other questions? No, that's great. Thank you so much for allowing us to present. We really enjoyed working with the district, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I think Ms. Davis is next. Yes. General Fund Budget Estimates, Cheryl.
Okay, so we're going to talk a little bit, it looks like it's kind of start up here at the top. We're going to talk a little bit about our budget estimates for the rest of this year as far as revenues. And then we're also going to talk about what they're looking like preliminarily for, well, not, a little more information on what they're looking like for next year. As we go through this, like I said, I want to talk a little bit for current year and what the pandemic and school closures have had on the impact on our revenues. Our, some of this is due to school closures. Some of this, we've talked about before, our tax collections this year are down. But they were down prior to the, they were actually down in January, so I really can't blame this on the pandemic. It's just that I think that our adjustments for our property taxes were not what they have been in the past. And so that is low, collections are lower for that reason. And also, they're just lower as a percent of levy than they've been in, looking back for a number of years, they haven't been this low. So we've had some settlements on some lawsuits. We may have some paybacks on those to the tune of about $600,000. So that's a combination of things are causing our tax collections to be low. Now, they're not really picking up either because I think that the collections that we normally get this time of year for delinquent collections, where, you know, people that are delinquent are probably not able to afford to pay those delinquent taxes at this point. And so those have not picked up like they normally would do. Our tuition revenues come from our after-school programs and our pre-K tuition. We did stop those when we closed the campuses. And so those are down, of course. And to a certain extent, I'm estimating that they may not pick up. I'm estimating next year's at only about 70% of what they normally would be. Investment earnings were down before, I think, anybody started talking about COVID-19 because the interest rates were way down and have continued to drop. So right now, for the current year, because we had a number of investments in CDs that were invested for a longer period of time. So we're still kind of earning off of those at the higher rates. But it looks like this year we'll be down about half a million dollars from where it was last year. But what we're buying right now for CDs are very low. So I am budgeting that at about a million dollars less for next year than what we have been earning. Again, extracurricular activities down some because we did not have the spring sports or plays or anything else going on. And then we have not spent our federal Title I funds. We've sort of that tapered off with the school closures. And salaries are still being paid out of those funds because we were allowed to spend the federal funds for salaries, just like we did the state fund. So those are still being spent, but we did not really spend a lot of the tutoring money and summer school money and all that we typically would do this time of year. As a result, we get indirect costs off of those expenditures. So without the expenditures, our indirect cost is down. Now, when I'm doing next year's budget, I assume those are actually going to be back up because we should be spending those monies that are going to roll forward in our federal programs. Our Medicaid reimbursement, I don't know that we will see a decrease in the current year because those payments run about six months behind. So that's where I'm really seeing this last quarter of the current year will impact next year's revenues because we probably will see about a 25% drop for our Medicaid reimbursements. Looking at our state revenues, because we've kind of talked about the ADA a little bit tonight and what that looks like. This is the way they're going, the TEA is going to calculate our state revenue for the current year. They are looking at what our six weeks attendance data from last year and those attendance patterns. They take an average for the first through the fourth six weeks. And then they take an average for the first through the sixth six weeks and come up with a ratio. So you can see that they came up with a ratio for 2018, 19 of .992. That's typical for us and it's very much the way we've always projected our ADA anyway for funding purposes. And so that's not unusual. They took for 1920, they extended the fourth six weeks. It ended up being a 42-day six weeks because it was extended to the last day of school. So our average, the first through fourth six weeks was 13,460, a little bit higher than it was last year by about 24 kids. So then they apply that 99.2% to that. And the ADA that we'll have for funding, of course, this is pre our final PENS numbers, but the ADA we'll have for funding at this point is 13,357. Like, again, a little bit up from last year. So on the surface, it looks like your state revenues are going to be about what you would expect them to be, except federal stimulus funds now come in. As we know, the state has not been collecting sales tax, the franchise tax, their oil and gas revenues are down. So there's a big hole in the state budget that they're going to have to plug. Right now, we've got some federal stimulus monies coming in the form, four different ways. FEMA, we will have some ability to apply for FEMA funds. Those are really limited to cleaning and disinfecting of facilities and anything that's related to preventing the spread of the disease. The CARES Act Fund, that comes in three ways. Child nutrition programs were greatly expanded. Our, the feeding program that we've done, the curbside feeding is an expansion actually of the summer feeding program. It's not from our regular food service program. So that was one of the ways they're supplementing us. An amount called the COVID Relief Fund. So districts will get $250 per child that's funded through state compensatory education or low SES students. But it's limited, so $250 per our low SES would come out to about $2.5 million. So this is limited at about $50,000. So as you can see, our first purchase order that we issued for instructional materials for distribution was twice that $50,000. So that's not going to cover the expenditures that we have had for remote learning. On the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, this is the big pot of money. We are getting about $4.9 million from those funds. 5% of those funds, about a little under a quarter million, are reserved for private and nonprofit schools. Now, in the past, we've always had to give private nonprofit schools part of our Title I funds. That has been limited to their low SES numbers. If they choose to participate, this 5% will go to the entire population of the private nonprofit schools. And so then the remainder of that 4.9 million, after they take that out, will fund the state shortfall in covering the foundation school program. So that ADA that we looked at on the previous page that would have generated our regular school funding that we normally get in foundation school will be reduced until we hit the $4.65 million. And so this money really, a lot of, there's been a lot of gnashing of the teeth because they're saying, oh, we're not getting this money. We were supposed to get this money, we're not getting it. But I guess the way I look at it, it's plugging that hole that we wouldn't get from the state. We're not going to get a proration from the state. So they're making us whole with this money as far as our state revenues. But it is not in addition to what our foundation school program. It will just bring us up to what we would have gotten in the foundation school program. Now, that money for the, on that federal money can be spent through June of 2021. And it is, while it's more flexible than Title I, there are some restrictions on what we can spend. So we are kind of looking at how we're going to spend that for next year. This looks a little bit at, I've kind of done this a few different ways. This is our general fund projections now of our revenues and expenditures as they, the original budget. This is 1920 still. And then what it looks like we're projecting right now. As you can see, our revenues are down about $4 million from what we originally budgeted. Expenditures are down, and this is, this is revised budget, not the original budget. Uh, expenditures are down about eight million. A lot of that again is in project. We had about six point, about six and a half million in projects that were funded in this year and then some carryover. Um, right now I'm anticipating that a lot of those may not get finished before the end of the school year and will have to be rolled forward. And also particularly, there's a lot of technology stuff that was not done. And then there's a likelihood, we ordered buses, but there's some, you know, buses always have a long lead time. They have an even longer lead time right now. So about seven hundred thousand of that under expenditure is buses. So, I mean, that's more than it normally is. But a lot of those will be spent again at the first of the year. So our net change in fund balance projected is just a loss, I think, for the current year of about a million dollars. Because with expenditures down and revenues down, I think it's still be about a million dollars. Our beginning fund balance was about forty nine million, so it'll be at forty eight million. Again, I have, I'm showing right now about three million that in committed funds that you guys have actually committed to specific things that will be unspent, that will be restricted from that. And then we'll have an unassigned fund balance of about forty five point two million. Now, that does not necessarily include the impact of some, some of what you've been seeing are some projects that you have not committed to as well. You know, we've got some coming up when we start looking at the Paul Tyson project and all those. Those you have not actually committed funding to or budgeted yet. So that does, is not included in those numbers. With the ADA adjustment for the stimulus funds, the revenues, as I said, the four point seven after the private nonprofit schools, we would have projected revenues this year of a hundred and fifty six point nine in the general fund. Because these federal funds are not going to come into the general fund. In the same kind of less, we have identified right now for that four point seven, those computer purchases that we approved in May that ran right at two million. And we've got some other technology purchases. So right now we have about two and a half million dollars identified that we are going to move from the general fund to these federal funds and charge them. Uh, we are still looking at that and I, and looking at what else we could fund. We've spent about five hundred and forty eight thousand at the end of April on COVID-related expenditures, if you will. And so we're looking at what else that we could move to those funds. If we don't spend all those funds, as I said, they'll carry forward into the next year. So it may, we may end up this year with less in our general fund fund balance. And we could use those federal funds then to maybe finish up our technology replacement. You know, do the second year of technology replacement in next year. But we're kind, still kind of working that to see how those funds are going to fit together. And if we did, I said, we still have a good size fund, unassigned fund balance, right at forty three million dollars. So that's not, would not really be an issue if we carried those expenditures into next year out of those federal monies. So as you can see, our fund balance right now is going to be up a little bit as it was right at, unassigned fund balance was at twenty five percent last year. It'll be twenty seven percent estimated at the end of this year. There's still, you know, there's still a lot of unknowns on these estimates. My, none of my patterns are, are applicable for this year for revenues or expenditures. So we're just kind of doing, estimating the best we can. We're getting ready to do another one at the end of the May data. And we'll have some a little bit better numbers at that point. So for our local property values, we have received those, we receive those the end of April. There, these numbers as well are a lot less certain. The chief appraiser had a lot of caveats to the preliminary numbers. They had about sixty million pending in Freeport applications. They did not have the numbers in for the industrial and the utilities. And then they are, they have increased their estimate on protest reduction quite a bit to about four point one percent. So the preliminary number is about six point seven percent over the prior year, lower than it's been. As you can see, our history in the last few years, from sixteen through eighteen, was almost in double digits every year. Last year went down to about seven point six percent, but this year, what he's got right now is seven point, is six point seven percent. But with the change of four point five percent in the preliminary. So one of the things that we are required to talk about, and this discussion is required for the, for our first rating. We need to talk about the state funding lag, even though the state funding lag no longer exists. So prior to this year, our state property values that we had to use the comptroller's values lagged our local values by one year. That was changed with House Bill Three last year. And now we actually have to calculate the state values from our local values. And that is, there's a lot of differences between the state values and the local values. I mean, some of the, the, there are different local exemptions that we, that McLennan County gives, that the state doesn't recognize. The TIF values are recognized differently with the state values. So we have to do some adjustments to calculate that state value. So for tax year twenty twenty, which will be our next fiscal year, twenty twenty one, the state and local compression of the tax rate is going to take place for the first time. So we've got, we, we had a little bit, the state told us what the rate was going to be last year. And they compressed the dollar that was our, the compressed rate from the prior compression was a dollar. They compressed that down to ninety three cents, and this is on our M and O rate. So then they set into, when, when they compressed back in two thousand five, six, they did not provide a mechanism for that to ever go up. And House Bill Three, it does provide some mechanism for that to go up or be further compressed, depending on what happens with local values. So the state rates was set at a four point oh one. That's what they estimated that the statewide property value growth was. And so when the state rate exceeds the two and a half percent that's set in the law, and you can see that formula, the state compression, maximum compressed rate for next year will be ninety one point six four cents. But district, if we grow more than the four point oh one percent, and you saw that six percent on the other sheet, then we further compress. So when we look at this, we would compress to about eighty eight cent, eighty two, sorry, eighty two is the minimum that can go, and I think ours comes out to about eighty eight. But we also get to keep, you see down here at the very bottom line, that thirteen eight three five. When the law was passed, they compressed our seventeen cents that we had generated with our TRE. Those golden and copper pennies were compressed to this thirteen cents. So our tax rate, if those values were, were to hold, our tax, our M and O rate will go from a dollar eight three five last year to a dollar three one seven three. So that's our local tax rate. Now, TEA is going to tell us what our maximum tax rate can be. And so between July eighteenth and August first, TEA is going to collect all the certified values from us to set our tier one tax rate. Now, the appraisal district is not required to certify our values until July twenty fifth. So if we don't get until July twenty fifth, we've got a smaller window even to get that information to TEA for them to calculate the rate. They are supposed to have a calculation to us back by August fifth. And we have ten days from August fifth to August fifteenth to appeal that. And if we don't, they don't hear from us in ten days, then it's final. Our last day to post the notice to discuss the meeting of budget and the tax rate is August twenty first. And then we have to adopt by August, we have to adopt the budget by August thirty first. And then we have sixty days till September thirtieth, after the certified appraisal rule, to adopt the tax rate. But all of that, TEA is going to have to do all those calculations in a very short period of time. So looking overall at what that, those revenue estimates and what impact on our budget, looks like our local revenue, and as I said, mentioned earlier, we were, investment income down about a million dollars. I'm taking our revenues from extracurricular activities and tuition and a lot of those local things, uh, maybe seventy, eighty percent, depending on what the item is. So we're looking at seventy two point seven for local revenue. Our state revenue, about eighty seven point four. And then federal revenue with that hit on our Shar's fund at about two point five million. So that would give us a total revenues of about a hundred and sixty two point seven million. Operating budget is one hundred and fifty nine point one. In our state revenue, because we have identified, and this is primarily in our special ed area and our comp ed, because our compensatory education was based on our low SES as they fall into five different tiers that TE, TEA also identifies now. There was some change from what they gave us for tiers last summer. They changed that twice during this year. It was changed in November and then again in February, March timeframe. They do not have the final tiers out for next year. But using that last group, we're using that, we will generate some more state compensatory money. But most of this new money, these special program increases are in the special ed area because of the additional identified students. So those, we will have to spend about a million one additional monies in those special program areas, which will bring our base budget up to about a hundred and sixty point two million. So revenues over expenditures still will be in the black here of two point four million. However, last year, when we did get all of that new money from HB three, we put about six point six million into our capital improvements, our maintenance improvements. We had safety and technology program and then our bus replacement. So that was about six point five million. Not included in that, in the base operating budget. So we're right now about four million short of being able to fund all of those things that we did last year. As I said, some of those projects may not complete this year and we may have some money that we're going to roll forward anyway.
We also don't have salaries in here. Oh, you're getting there. There you go.
So if we look, the other thing that I did not put in here, and Dr. Ken Cannon and I talked about it. I did not put huge enrollment or attendance declines. I did not estimate our state revenue with big declines in enrollment or attendance. We may have those. For every kid we lose, we lose about seventy two hundred dollars. So if we lose a hundred kids, we're going to lose seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I don't know. I mean, I know a lot of districts are expecting great losses. I'm just, at this point, not really planning on that. Again, we have, we have a good sized fund balance and if we do have some losses, we can get through that. But it's really just hard to know. We don't even have, you know, attendance guidelines or anything yet, so it's hard to know what that's going to do. For the pay increases, the salary increases is the, at one percent would be the million four. Now, on the top of that, because I was not sure either whether that would include a benefit impact. So we can add about a hundred and forty thousand because benefits run us right at ten percent. Without, when you exclude group health, which doesn't grow with the salary increase, it runs right about ten percent. So it'll cost us another hundred and forty thousand with the benefit impact of those salaries. Now, we did not increase our group health last year. We're in pretty good shape right now as far as our group health plan because a lot of people were not, our discretionary treatments had gone down, people were not able to get in to see doctors. And so, you know, our group health plan is doing really well right now. We are out for bid, so we'll see what that looks like. If we have a ten percent increase, which in, in previous years was probably very conservative because they were running more in the fifteen to thirty percent increase some years. But that would be about eight hundred and forty five thousand. Teacher retirement, we do know that's going up a little bit, so that's about a two hundred thousand dollar impact. We have additional requests, of course, from departments and campuses for positions. We don't know what we might have additional costs for things such as hygiene supplies. We know we've bought quite a bit. We're getting a lot of the masks and thermometers and things like that from the state. So we, but we still have costs that we're having to cover. I don't know what the impact right now will be on substitute costs. If there are people who are unable to come back to work or get ill, you know, that's something we have not really, I'm estimating it based, basically about the same as it's been. But I don't know whether we'll have some huge impact on substitute costs or not. Then again, we don't have maintenance improvements or technology replacement or vehicle replacements in there. So there will be some, we'll be looking at those as well. And those, for the most part, can be either, like I said, I think we can use the, some of those federal monies to continue our technology replacement program. And we could even carry that out another year if necessary because those will be going into that following year even. But I'm still scrubbing the budget, if you will. One of the things that will help us a little bit is we finished paying off the stadium this past year. So that's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in savings that I pulled out earlier today out of these numbers. So I think, you know, there, we've, we're in good shape as far as the salary increase, at least at the one percent. And to get our, if we need some benefit increases, the benefit fund is in good shape. So if we decided to let that ride a little bit, we're probably not, wouldn't be a problem. And we could still put some money into our maintenance improvement projects, technology and vehicles. That's it.
Cheryl, quick question. Yeah, you mentioned on the investment portfolio, you're going to have some runoff and roll off of some of the investments coming up. And obviously in concern about replacing them, what your replacement. Do you have an idea of what our average duration is right now on the investment portfolio?
Well, you know, we're limited to what we can invest in in the first place to, I think, two years. So certainly, most of what we have is not more than two years. What I've been buying at these low rates that we've been able to get, I'm probably only going out a year. I'm not going out longer term at this point.
Right, right. Yeah, the news on that front just is not, not improving at all. So that's something we're, like you've indicated, you're budgeting for and I have to live with for a while, I believe, so.
I took it back to about through, three or four years ago when we were, when it was running at the one percent rate. Um, I kind of went back to that point for looking at what we're doing. But I did. But I did, I think at 0.3, I was happy the other day with 0.3, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Cheryl. There are so many moving parts. I don't even know. I don't know how you keep up with it all. Thank you. Um, let's see. Oh my gosh, we do have one more thing. Dr. Warren, sorry, it ran over to my third page. Good evening.
Yes, I am your one more thing. And I bring to you this evening a first reading for an update to local policy FNCA, which is all about the dress code. After consulting with our campus administrators and looking around at districts that were similar to ours in terms of the student population that they serve, and just taking into consideration the current state that we're in right now. We are recommending that the reference to a standard mode of dress be removed from FNCA local. That would shorten the policy. And you can see on the attachment, the revised language that has been suggested. The primary consideration, the initial request that my department received was one for consistency in the district and to really ensure that as our relatively highly mobile population moved around the district, that they did not have a variety of expectations associated with the dress code. Said that they could be assured that in this area, things would be consistent. That request for consistency, though, is also coming from our administrators in terms of their ability to enforce it. By having a policy that is streamlined, that also means that it narrows their focus in terms of their efforts to enforce the dress code. So our existing district dress code is sufficient to cover a presentation of our students in a way that will allow us to maintain safe, inclusive, respectful learning environment for all of our students. And that's the goal. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about this proposal.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
And Dr. Warren, can you help me, I guess, kind of understand kind of how this is going to shape, or how this is different from what we had? I understand the, on here, it says student apparently determines student's personal dress, grooming standards. Yeah, can you just kind of help me understand a little bit of the backstory of the, kind of, what the, what the administration was asking for, or campus administrators were asking for?
Well, what we have in place now is a stand, or a district dress code that forms the foundation in terms of allowable and non allowable items of clothing. So there are items that include references, for instance, to wearing pants without holes in them, those kinds of specifications for our students. And that's the basis of our general district dress code. So we have that. And then we also have a number of variations of a standard mode of dress because campuses are allowed under current policy to determine something that looks like a uniform, but isn't actually a uniform. So the distinction between a standard mode and a uniform is that a standard mode is based on components that are easily available in your regular stores, but that are standardized across the population of the students. And since this was a campus decision on the standard mode of dress, that means that every single campus could have its own variation of that, which led to a call for consistency.
Great. Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else?
No.
I would just say thank you to Dr. Warren for tackling this. This is a hard issue. This is another one of those systems and processes that we've been talking about where we're trying to standardize across the district. This one was brought forward by principals early on when we talked about the needs of the district. And their request was, can we do the same thing? Because it's hard when a student comes and they don't have the clothing that the school requires and they move in, or it might take them a long time to get, and it becomes difficult to manage and enforce. And so I appreciate Dr. Warren for tackling this and reviewing it. And as you know, issues can be, could be a difficult conversation.
It appears it's focused on outcomes, which is, I think, a good thing that establishes consistency across the district. And the outcomes are what we really want to focus on. We appreciate you, Dr. Warren.
Anything else?
Oh, I just said, we don't want to burden our parents either during this time with COVID-19. That was another consideration, and I don't remember if Warren mentioned that. But we want to be, we want to, we want to be sensitive to the money that's being spent and that's just really hard right now for families. And so that was a secondary consideration, but also the conversation that we had.
Sorry, the, having been a teacher, very well aware of the students coming weeks on end without the proper attire or uniform or whatever, you know, and so I, I appreciate this, this change. And it sometimes kind of seems small, but it really is big. And so I do appreciate the, the effort that you've put into this, Dr. Warren. I know dress code seems small, but again, can cause a lot of
Absolutely.
upheaval. So yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
We want to be responsive to our families and to our staff members and really allow them to focus on the main thing. While the dress code absolutely serves a purpose within our creation of an appropriate learning environment, it should not become a burden to anyone. So we'll, we'll continue to work on it and tweak. But this is just the, the first step is getting our local policy to a place where we now have some wiggle room, where we can really see how we can, we can work together to make sure our students are appropriately dressed, but that they're really focusing on, on learning.
Thank you, Dr. Warren. I really think this is, this is a great idea and appreciate all your work on it.
Thank you.
So will we vote next week or in July? Next week?
If the board is ready, we'll have a second reading and vote on June 25th.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Warren. Thanks for hanging on to the end. Okay, Kyle, that saved me from having to guess between you and Josh.
But it's fun to guess, right?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you for the opportunity. Last month, we talked about the pandemic electronic benefit transfer that all of our families are eligible for. And at that point, we were sharing information about what was coming. Starting this past week, the state made the application available online. We've shared that link in a number of different ways with our families, but wanted to take the opportunity to briefly talk about it tonight as well. As a reminder, the benefit is a $285 benefit available to any child who qualifies for free or reduced lunch because of the community eligibility provision. It applies to all of our families and to apply P E B T. And they can also find the link to that application on the district's homepage and all of our campus homepages. The application closes on June 30th.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Great.
Excuse me, what was that line, application?
June 30th is when the state is closing the application period. So our families have until the end of the month to apply for that benefit.
Thank you.
Okay, well, with that, I think we're about done. We are meeting next week, or two weeks, two weeks, two weeks, I'm sorry. So I misspoke earlier about the policy change. We're meeting on June 25th. So if anybody's got anything about that policy, we have a little time. And anything else tonight? Is there anything else, Dr. Ken Cannon?
Yeah, I might mention that the Virtual Summer Leadership Institute for Board Members is still available for you. If you're interested in registering for that, Christie can get you registered. And that will, you don't have to do it all on the designated days. I think that carries forward for you for three or four weeks to watch those sessions. So if you want to get your hours in, your required training, you have an opportunity to do so virtually this year.
I noticed when I looked at that, they didn't have much information about it. They had the schedule and they said that you'll have time to watch or participate and, but more later. So there wasn't, when I looked at it, I didn't have a big incentive to sign up because there's just really not much information about what's going to be there. So.
Yeah, you may opt to wait until the fall conference in September if you, if you want, you know, the board may want to do that. I think I'll register just to see what they have, just with COVID-19 and any current information. But yes, information has been hard to get.
Do we have a deadline to register?
No, I know there is, but I don't know the date off the top of my head. And I'm thinking it is coming quickly. I want to say the 18th or 19th. But I can double check that and get that information to you.
Yeah, if you, if you could ask Christie to, to remind us all of that deadline and then we can all look to see what's up by that date and make a decision.
Sure. Happy to do it.
Oh, sorry. Is, is there, do we have any information on the Juneteenth parade? I know Mr. Manning at times has.
Well, so, so we were, we had mentioned that while we were waiting for you to get on briefly. And we are going to, we just got information from the Syn-tax African American Chamber today about that decision. And, and so Mr. Manning and I are going to talk tomorrow. And we will get more information out to everybody with what we decide to do. I, I think the format, I noticed from Mr. Bible's email is going to be different. And so we just got to gather information and then we'll share it with everybody.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else? All right, thanks, guys. Two weeks, June 25th. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, everyone.